Okay, so we are back and we will start with item 7.3. Overview and discussion of the organizational analysis of indigent services report entitled, "The Right to Counsel in Lake County, California." And this is by Admin. CAO Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The county contracted with the Sixth Amendment Center to analyze the provision of indigent services, also known as public defender services. Beginning in September 2021, the Sixth Amendment Center observed approximately 170 court proceedings and interviewed several different stakeholders. Since the 109-page report is available online, I plan to briefly share the consultant findings and recommendations. The Board items 7.4 following will present the initial steps staff recommends as next steps. Please note, the findings and recommendations do not, I mean, I'm sorry, let me start again. The findings and recommendations are that of the Sixth Amendment Center. So under findings, there were four findings. The first is that, just as an overview, the state of California has not established any means to ensure that Lake County provides to every indigent defendant an attorney who has the time, training, and resources to provide effective presentation at every critical state, every criminal or juvenile delinquency case. In short words, or in short terms, it's an unfunded mandate by the state of California. The second finding is that although the contract provides a means by which the county can oversee the partnership administration and provision of the right to counsel, Lake County does not do so. The county does not know on an ongoing basis whether the right to counsel, if being provided effectively, to how many and how many cases of what types, by whom, and how much the provision of the effective right to counsel should cost. That's, in my opinion, a failure to manage the contract which falls within the field of the administration. Third finding, the LID partner attorney subcontract with private attorneys, including themselves, to represent indigent defendants in the types of trial level cases for which the state of California is responsible for providing the right to counsel under the U.S. Constitution. Although the subcontract provide means by which the LID partner attorneys can oversee the provision of the right to counsel by all the subcontractor attorneys, they do not know on an ongoing basis whether the right to counsel is being effective, is being provided effectively. I want to go back to item two for a moment. When I said it was a failure on Admin's part, it's a failure of capacity and knowledge in order to manage that type of contract. Finding four, Lake County's contract with the LID partner attorney pays them a flat annual fee to administer the trial lever indigent defense system and to provide all right to counsel services for which the state of California is responsible under the U.S. Constitution. These flat fee compensation methods result in a system-wide conflict of interest between each and every indigent person's interest in their constitutionally guaranteed right to effective representation and the personal financial interests of the attorney appointed to represent them, leading to the constructive denial of the right to counsel to some indigent people in Lake County. Again, I want to reiterate that these are the findings by the Sixth Amendment Center. The report also included the following recommendations. Lake County policymakers should advocate for the state of California to form a legislative and/or gubernatorial committee to study and make recommendations about how best to fulfill the state's Sixth and Fourteenth Amendment responsibilities. Recommendation two, the Lake Board of Supervisors should establish a nonpartisan independent commission to oversee all aspects of indigent representation services. And lastly, Lake County Board of Supervisors should establish, immediately establish, an office of indigent representation services to carry out the day-to-day duties of the commission headed by an executive director attorney selected by the commission. So in conclusion, the evaluation cites a lack of accountability and oversight in Lake County's provision of public defender services. Administration and county council have been exploring the next steps that would best fit the county of Lake, both structurally and financially, to provide effective public defender services. This concludes my overview. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything from the Board? Do we have anybody from the public in the chambers?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Sullivan. I am a co-administrator of Lake Indigent Defense, also known as LID. This is my partner, Tom Feimer, and together we administer Lake Indigent Defense, which administers public defense in Lake County. We have had the contract, I have been the original partner since 2017. There's been a couple of other partners that have assisted and then went on to other things. One became a judge and another has recently retired. Since 2017, we have not gone off of the contract at all, and we have done that ethically and legally. We represent over 95% of the defendants in Lake County. And we do that at a budget that is well than, less than half than comparable counties. So some highlights that, from the report, the report says that two felony defenders have no previous criminal experience. That's blatantly not true. All of our defenders on the felony contract are experienced in criminal law. They may be referencing two former district attorneys that came to work as felony defenders. I also take issue with the idea that a flat fee creates a system-wide denial of the right to counsel. A flat fee, by another name, would be a salary. So I'll let Mr. Feimer discuss some of the possible options that the Board could take.
Thank you, Andrea. Restart your three minutes.
Thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity. Just to follow up what my partner, Ms. Sullivan, and co-administrator said, yes, the flat fee finding is a bit puzzling. The report also, 6AC, as if you look at their other findings and other places around the country, usually does is recommends a statutory public defender office wherein everybody would be working for a fixed salary. It is true that our contractors are effectively carrying the load of a full-time public defender, and we are not paying them as much as somebody doing comparable work in another county. The reason we justify that system is defenders are allowed to take other clients, private clients, clients out of county. Again, if this is creating a conflict, frankly, we're going to need to look at some form of greater compensation in order to basically just retain people. Right now, we are forming, I take issue with the idea that we're not denying people the right to counsel. I can say we are guaranteeing everybody who needs a lawyer, counsel. Counsel, if you look at the numbers in the 6AC report, although they don't do much analysis, counsel that is providing outcomes that is as good or better than many of the statutory offices within the state of California. But we're doing it at bare minimum of staffing levels of attorneys. And the reason is because, again, the pay is not kept pace with inflation and also what comparable other counties are offering. We just had a very talented, very, very good attorney leave us from Mendocino County in their public defender office simply because they offer what we cannot, which is a higher salary and benefits. Nonetheless, our attorneys are, under what are challenging circumstances, are doing a phenomenal job. While I welcome more oversight from the Board, I think the counties, you know, should and can expect that, I do take issue with some of the ideas of establishing another office or some other thing to sort of direct, you know, attorney performance. Fundamentally, our people know their jobs. They know how to defend people and they do it well. I think adding more and more layers of, you know, officers or other administrative staff isn't going to get anybody out of jail sooner who shouldn't be, isn't going to get anybody a shorter sentence if they're deserving it. What we need are more attorneys and more resources for those attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you. And we can answer any of the Board's questions if? Okay. Let me check the Zoom room. Is there anyone else in the chambers? I don't see any hands up in the Zoom room. Bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Sabatier?
And I don't know which item this belongs in, but I think it kind of, both items offer the same opportunities for some of the comments I want to make. But the impacts to someone's life if we are not overseeing or ensuring that all appropriate services are provided, the impacts of going to jail, the impacts of being arrested, the impacts, the impacts are very real and can be not just a setback, but can also close a lot of doors. So I think this is an important topic for us to lean and move forward with. But we need to set up a system that will not just be people who care, but people who understand the system in a legal way. And we need to, I think, act expeditiously and make every attempt we can to make sure that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and ensuring that the people that we represent here are provided the appropriate services. I don't have the statistics in front of me, but I do know that a lot of people in our community have interactions with the justice system. And ensuring that that interaction is the appropriate process that they go through is, I think, of utmost importance for all of us.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I see this item, unlike the next one, does have a recommended action, and that would be to direct staff to develop and implement a plan to improve public defender services. That's going to be as close to a no-brainer recommended action as I've seen in my lifetime. Without any disrespect to any individual cases, any individual attorneys, any individual outcomes, I do personally see a need for increased oversight and understanding. And by the way, not just for indigent counsel. I'm concerned about performance of our DA's office from time to time. I note in the staff report that the county is one party that has responsibilities. The state of California probably has the greater share, in my estimation, and therefore I think the judicial council and our bench also have an affirmative duty to make sure that all the wheels are on our justice system and moving appropriately. I can't claim to be an expert on this court, but in my previous incarnation at DSS, I did have the ability to watch a fair number of juvenile dependency proceedings. I also tended to watch the Friday trial assignment calendars. And I'm just a layperson. But in both settings, it has been bumpy sometimes. It has been uneven. And the saying that justice delayed is justice denied springs to mind when you're dealing with contract attorneys, whether it's for juvenile dependency or indigent defense. And those attorneys have obligations, often in different counties. You know, how would we even begin to do adequate oversight of that? You know, when we have basically a herd of cats with law degrees and crowded court calendars and a growing number of specialty courts, and now this indication that we're going to move toward care court for seriously mentally ill people in the near future. And that will implicate indigent defense as well. So I'm just strongly supportive of that. I was very concerned to read the report. I know it was just focused on Lake County. I have to imagine there are plenty of other rural counties in similar situations. And I don't know that immediately adopting a public defender model is where we need to go. But I do, I do agree very strongly with the report's primary recommendation that we need added oversight over indigent defense. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Well, for direction, I think that I'd like to see something come back to us as to what that oversight looks like and who are the members of that oversight committee. I know we have something right now, but I think we need to revamp and review and possibly renew, just to make sure. And that's not the subject today, so I don't want to get into the details. But I definitely hope that that will come back to us ASAP so that we can start putting out applications, reaching out to specific individuals that we know meet qualifications. But I think that's a good step in moving forward at first. And I think that we, we do need to look at what is the next iteration, because I don't think, as it's been working, no one from LID has approached us saying it's not working. Unfortunately, we paid for these comments that were made, these recommendations that were read out loud from the Sixth Amendment group. But that is their findings, and I don't think their findings are too far off of what is happening. And so I think we need to do a change and we need to figure out what that change looks like. But I think first and foremost, bring back to us that committee.
So do we have consensus to direct staff to implement the plan?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you. And we will move on to item 7.4, presentation of initial steps in the county's ongoing review of the provision of legal services for indigent criminal defendants, county Thank you, Board.
I'll be presenting this along with Carlos Torres, a deputy in my office, who's also sitting as your advisor today. I'd like to begin by just stating that in the report that was preferred of 109 pages, criticism is always so much easy.
Yeah, it's closer. There we go.
That in the report that has just been referenced, 100-plus pages, you'll notice that there were barely three pages given to recommendations. Criticism is easy. Constructing improvements is much more difficult. Criminal justice system in California across the country can often be chaotic just by nature of the work that's performed. What we're talking about today are things that we believe can improve the system and the provision of legal services that our office has been looking at. And one of the things that has been discussed briefly is the oversight. And the county has had a public defender advisory committee. We believe the committee could be much more robust with people who are actually affected by the criminal justice system, who have been a defendant in the criminal justice system, who by nature of their classifications are often mishandled through the criminal justice system. People who can provide your Board and the public with a great deal more information as to what criminal justice actually means in a real and practical way. That will also help you understand the challenges and the hurdles that have to be overcome in this process. One of the other recommendations that we'd ask you to consider is to develop a community-based approach to criminal defense services. Supervisor Green was talking about all these specialty courts. Those courts exist for a reason, and working in conjunction with those courts may develop a great deal of community-oriented approach. Not everyone who's committed a crime belongs in a jail cell. The item number three in our presentation is to retain the services of a former public defender to assist the county in ensuring the comprehensive provision of indigent services. Not a high-optic review, but an actual, on-the-ground, roll-up-the-sleeves kind of assist in this, in this program by someone who is, the person we have in mind, and I'll let Carlos Torres explain that to you in more detail, the person we have in mind is a retired public defender of some significant stature, who is well-known throughout the state and one of the most dynamic people I've ever spoken to. And then to continue to pursue grant funding in terms of improvements to the services, both computer access, office work, et cetera. There are so many things that could be improved if we have grant funding. I know that the Admin Office and members of my office worked together to submit a recent grant, and Carlos can also explain to you the particulars of that. So that, in a nutshell, are the recommendations that we're making. And again, none of this will happen overnight, but a steady progression along these lines will both provide your Board with more information as to the nature of the services and where things may need an assist from the county, both in terms of resources and staffing. But it will also, I believe, help to drive a more community-based approach toward public defender services as a whole. And with that, I'll let Carlos go ahead and...
Hello, Board. So several months ago, this body had tasked our office, as well as Admin, to consider things that we could do to both support and improve the services provided by LID and whatever we could do, maybe even outside of LID, to help our indigent defendants. One of the things that we've been doing from the beginning was reaching out to both active chief public defenders and recently retired chief public defenders, because no one else would have the sheer amount of knowledge as people in those positions. And we've been lucky in that every single one of them that we've contacted has been readily available to help. They have suggestions and they want to be part of it. They want to help Lake County do better. And now with the publication of this report, they have all seen it. It has made the rounds through the public defense world very, very quickly. And so the public defender, most recently, that we've been talking to the most, who has been the most helpful, his name is Jose Varela. He's the retired chief public defender of Marin County. He was in that position for 16 years. He currently runs trainings. He's somebody who is involved in public defense from top to bottom, and he is willing to, under a service agreement, assist us in all the changes that are necessary, at this point necessary, to improve the level of services for our indigent defendants. He's been an incredible help, and at some point, I would, I would love for the Board to be able to talk to him and ask of him questions. Because honestly, we, from this office, we don't always know what we don't know. We're county council. We handle civil issues all day long. But criminal is a different animal, and so we only know so much. It's important that we ask someone who does. Aside from that, we've been in touch with the California office, the state public defenders office for California. They've been incredibly helpful in not only helping find new grant opportunities, of which we've recently applied for a third one. All three of our grants combined would total over 1.3 million, which is what we're really looking to do, is help boost the amount of money that we can use as resources for this, for this project. But also in putting us in contact with other public defenders, both chiefs, high deputies, people who are involved, professors, everybody who has a stake in this process. And it's been, it's been really great. So currently, we're in negotiations with that retired chief public defender to offer his services on a more continued basis. We're continually having conversations with the state. We're continually looking at new opportunities for new funding. And ideally, we want to work with our partners in LID, because we understand the attorneys that work for them now, they're going to be our partners going forward, right? These are going to be the attorneys that are still going to represent Lake County. We want to support them. We want to help them do the best that they possibly can. So we're willing to work with them and see what they need and offer the resources that we can, so that another report like this would never be warranted again. No one wants to see their county described like ours was, right? It's not a surprise. Every report that 6AC does has similar outcomes. But that makes sense, because counties don't ask for a consultant to look at programs that are doing great. You wouldn't need to. I mean, there's a reason we commissioned it. There's a reason they had the findings that they did. But because of that, we're all moving in the right direction to help fix it. So if you have any questions about our, our direction, be more than happy to answer.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Strongly supportive of all the proposed ideas in here. But again, going back, the idea of shared responsibility, our county as a whole, Admin, has a role in that. We pay for things. The state has a bigger role, I would say. They build courtrooms that have been waiting for a while. Would love to see another judge. So I want to support this, but as we support this, you know, and as we focus on the public defender role, again, I want to reinforce something I said earlier. You know, it is, what happens in those bumpy courtrooms is very much a shared responsibility. So it doesn't fall on LID in any way when we have caseloads or stuff getting juggled by the DA's office that lands in their lap and they are trying to juggle those assorted balls. It doesn't fall on LID in any way when we don't have enough judges or when we have visiting judges. It's not on LID to figure out whether a Zoom court is still as useful as it was in years past. The cadence of our court proceedings and the various requirements, again, of our specialty courts, I can't imagine how any attorney, however well-prepared they might be, would be able to follow all these bouncing balls and get a glowing report from 6AC or anyone else. So I want to be supportive. One question I would have for LID is if they have adequate funding for investigator services now. You know, if they're just showing up with one shoe in the courtroom and, you know, not able to meaningfully present their cases because they don't have adequate resources or they're waiting on witnesses or something like that. So one initial question I would have is, in addition to the contract attorneys we have under LID, what type of support do they have right now? Again, just very lay observation of what I saw, but I saw too many Marsden hearings going on, you know, saw judges getting DQ'd and stuff like that. So part of that is the normal give and take of criminal justice, and the part of that seems a little bit above the norm, even in a small rural county. So as much as I want to get this stuff going, I do want to be supportive of LID in the meantime. And if there are any short-term needs that we can add to this bullet list, maybe they can explain them now and maybe we can take a look at that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to make the comment of, I'm in support, looking forward to where your negotiations end. Hopefully, we can have that conversation with the gentleman who may be interested in coming here. All of those things sound good to me. And you mentioned something that I kind of want to change your words. I hope we can set expectations and that whoever we're working with will be meeting those expectations, because we are the ones representing the people that are being defended, and we want to make sure that we set a standard for what those people experience when they go to court.
If I may, one of the things that we'd like to be able to bring back with you, if, again, you give us the direction to do so, is going to be some more definitive list of what can be done immediately, what we recommend begins over time, and what the longer-range goals are. As far as the... As far as the prior report that was commissioned at some point, whatever the goal of that report, it provides no substitution for the hands-on involvement of someone with the type of public defender experience of Mr. Varela. And we are hopeful that your board will agree to something along those lines so that there's going to be an on-the-ground person who can work to make improvements. And those improvements would include recommendations for resources and what's lacking, not just, again, it's, you know, criticism apparently can take place in 100 pages, but recommendations just needs to be... So I don't think that's really lost on anyone in regard to that report. But every system is certainly worthy of improvement in public defender services, and the constitutional obligations of this county certainly deserve a very thorough, comprehensive review of how to do better.
Just to Supervisor Green's point, we do believe that a stronger and better-resourced PD defense system will improve the DA system as well. The tougher the competition is, the higher the DA's will have to raise to the moment is the hope. Currently, we don't have any oversight over the DA, this office, we do not. But we do think that the better-resourced the public defenders are, the better-trained that they are, the more accountable that they are, the better the fight they're going to put up to the DA's office, and the DA will have to compensate for that. And currently, a lot of the things that are being requested and being discussed would require more transparent information from LID, and we've started that process. We have been getting more information from them, and we hope that all of our future requests for information continually comes as quickly as it has and perhaps with a little bit more detail so we can truly address these issues and not just leave them in the air as requests that never get answered.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public.
I will reintroduce myself again. I'm Andrea Sullivan, co-administrator for Lake Indigent Defense, and this is Mr. Feimer, my partner and co-administrator. One of the things I didn't bring up in my last presentation, and one of the things that the 6AC report fails to mention, what county council fails to mention, and is the giant elephant in the room, is the independent contractor model which LID is based on. The reason why there is no direct supervision is to maintain the public, the independent contractor model. So since, as long as I've been in Lake County, which is 2014, and well beyond that, the Board has always contracted with an entity that utilizes independent contractors. And part and parcel of that is maintaining the subcontractor's independence from the county because the county has made clear they do not want to or cannot fund a statutory public defender office, which would be in excess of $4 million. Again, LID handles over 95% of the criminal defendants at a higher, with some of the lowest conviction rates and the highest dismissal rates in California. We consistently rake in the top third for higher numbers of dismissals and in the top low-third for felony convictions. So the result, if you go to trial with a LID attorney, you have probably a 50/50 chance of getting a hung jury or an acquittal, and that is well better than the state standard. So the fundamental question is if you, as a county, want more direct oversight, at a certain point, the subs are going to be employees, and that comes with additional costs. So there's a fork in the road that this Board, it's one thing to say you want more oversight, but what does that fundamentally mean? We are already paying our subs about two-thirds of a comparable county for size and budget. And the way that they can supplement their income and maintain their independence so they can, we can, we've been audited more than once by EDD, and we can truthfully say these are independent contractors. These are not employees. They're not employees of LID, and they're not employees of the county. So I think that is something that we've been tiptoeing around, but that needs to be addressed head-on. And myself and Mr. Feimer, we are happy to do whatever the county wants, but the county needs to be clear. Do you want independent contractors, and with that comes a lack of oversight? Or do you want more direct interaction? You're going to make them employees.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment briefly on some of the...
Can you just state your full name?
Yeah, my name is Thomas Feimer. I'm sorry. I shouldn't assume everybody.
For the record.
Yeah, and I should be used to that, given I state it multiple times myself, every day. So I want to respond just briefly to a comment Supervisor Green made, which I think is very well-taken. There is a tendency, and it's not particularly new, but it's increasing for sort of what will happen is legislature will pass all kinds of new forms of relief and mandates and programs. The mental health diversion is an example of this and one we've been struggling with. And the tendency within the system is it's unfunded and there's no structure, and the responsibilities all just sort of get passed on to the attorney to sort of actually make all this kind of stuff happen, that really what we need are social workers, adminis, you know, assistants, people to get this stuff done, where attorneys, I've heard a lot of saying, no one has ever defended somebody, you know, if you've ever defended somebody who's facing life in prison on charges, just that and investigating that and doing that is an immense and very weighty responsibility. And so, again, we welcome oversight, and we welcome just involvement. You know, we're at 394 Forbes Street. Anybody, including anybody here, can come in and talk to us if they want or learn more. We're not some opaque kind of like, you know, secret cabal over there. Walk on in and set up a meeting and talk with us. But again, I appreciate, and what is, needs to be explored, I think, is sort of support for the attorneys that kind of frees them to do the job of attorneys in a lot of fashions. And additional funding for investigators, social workers, administrative assistants are really something that I think do need to be explored because, again, taking somebody's, you know, life into your hands and defending them and their liberty is a full-time job. And we keep putting more and more burdens on our attorneys to do additional things, and they pick up the slack very brilliantly, but it comes at a cost eventually. It comes at a cost in burnout. It comes at a cost of maybe having to prioritize things that you otherwise wouldn't want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the board chambers? Anyone in the Zoom room? I'm not seeing any hands up. Bring it back to the Board.
I might. Certainly, just to clarify, I don't think anyone is attempting to ignore decisions that your Board is going to have to make. As I said, what we would like to bring back to you are immediate actions that can be taken, and then more long-range. Your Board is going to have to develop your plan for this as you get more information, more data, more reporting, and hopefully with a consultant's assistance, a better idea of priorities that at least can be recommended to you. But eventually, your Board is going to have to look at systems and how best you wish to provide services in this area. That's a given.
Supervisor Spatier?
I just wanted to respond to some of the comments. Just because something's been done a certain way for a while doesn't mean that there's not the possibility of change. Might be difficult, might be, seem unattainable, but I think that change is always possible. And on one end, I have one attorney saying, here are our great stats, and on the other end, but we could do a whole lot better. And I think we all want to do a whole lot better. And so I think that's, if we can find that common ground, I think that we can move forward, and we can figure out a good place to go. So just wanted to make that statement.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just to clarify the comment, yeah, the independent contractor is what it is. I don't think it's appropriate for public defense. One of the biggest takes from that report is a lack of ability to know what's going on with all these various contract attorneys. To actually maintain independent contractor status, you have to consciously, as LID, not give them express direction on how they handle any particular case. At least if you're holding true to what an independent contractor truly is, you would not be giving that direct direction. So thank you for doing what you have under the current model. But I think definitely a pivot is forthcoming, expensive as it might be, and change in business models as might be required. But I get where you've been in your journey, and I appreciate it. But, you know, very clearly to me, to this specific point of whether independent contractors are going to continue to be a thing, I hope as we move forward, we'll realize pretty soon that isn't working out very well. Thank you.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, just appreciate the, you know, the, obviously, the conversation from both sides, but, you know, I think what's presented to us today is the right step at this point. So in complete support, you know, because everything always needs to be looked at, and change is hard, but we all know that what we're talking about is someone's complete life, a young man or young woman or whoever, however they represent themselves are. It's crucial. It's crucial to their life, the path they take, and we need to just make sure we can do and try and do better. We all know that. I don't know, coming from the Native American community on our side, you know, that representation is so important. And when you go into a courtroom, if you're paying for legal representation or you're not, we know there's a disparity there, and we know those opportunities for folks that can do that. So I'm wholeheartedly behind it. I don't have the answers. I am not an attorney. I will never say or even act like one. I might talk as much as one, but I will not know. But, you know, I appreciate the difficult conversations we're having right now because it could change someone's life, and that's the most important thing that we always need to consider. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate you coming in, and, you know, we have this report. We're committed to working together to make things better. And, you know, looking at the short-term and long-term goals, that's something that we're going to need to follow up on as well, and the resources that are needed to do the work to support both LID and the defendants. So appreciate you coming in, appreciate the willingness to work. It's not an easy conversation, but we're all here to do the hard thing. So thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. One more comment from Supervisor Crandall.
No, I do appreciate the, you know, the recommendations. You know, having an advisory committee really would help. I know a lot of times indigent families aren't familiar with legal processes and usually have to depend on other family members to count on that have experience. And I know, for me, I understand that in regards to the agency that's speaking today, I know that they can get quite overwhelmed at times. And then not to mention the whole situation with COVID, doing a lot of, you know, the Zoom meetings and, you know, Zoom, the Zoom court, having some of these hearings over at the fairgrounds. And so, you know, I know that, you know, there may be conflicting ideas about what was done in the report, but at the same time, this gives an opportunity to get back on track regardless, or at least have a path forward, you know. So that's my opinion.
Supervisor Spatier?
Just a last comment. I want to thank Cao Parker for her prior presentation, her words that we share responsibility in making sure that this goes in the right direction. And I think that's a key part to this, is not pointing any fingers rather than saying, we're not doing good enough and we need to do better. And I just wanted to express that because I don't know how many people specifically heard. I'm not going to repeat it, but I appreciated the comment. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will close out this item.